...twenty-five minutes and then we'll open up the floor to questions. We're taking questions from our live stream as well tonight, as well as on Twitter, so we welcome those who are watching online. And as we begin, we'll bring the panel back up onstage to answer your questions as well, and we'll get things underway. So without further ado, Ron Smale, OSA President, thanks very much, Ron.
Thanks, Ben, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening, and to those across the province, welcome as well. As Ben has mentioned, certainly you can get your questions in, and we'll do our very, very best to secure those answers today. So we're talking this evening about governance reform at the OSA, governance modernization, and the fact that the OSA continues to change and become one of the leading provinces in this country with respect to our way of doing business. And tonight, I'm here to share the work of the board. So it's not my presentation, this is what the board has agreed to and has been working over the last three years on, and we'll talk in detail about some of the issues coming forward. So why? Well, the country continues to change from a sporting perspective, and things are changing around the world. Certainly, you'll see, and you'll read, and you'll hear of how a lot of sporting organizations today are looking at good governance. Good governance is a key component, so we're talking about what occurs off the pitch versus on the pitch, how decision-making, how roles and responsibilities off the pitch are very, very critical to an athlete's experience, a coaching experience, a match official experience, or even an administrator or a fan's experience. So there's good governance models, the good governance models that's out there, the board has looked at a number of them, and we brought them here this evening and in our last three sessions to really share with you what the board's vision is going forward. We'll also be looking at the issue around strategic plans. The OSA is on its second run of a strategic plan, and we'll talk a little bit about that, just to give you some background and some history. Certainly, every strategic plan should be supported by an organizational plan. It's critical that staff has the ability to move in the direction that the board wishes the staff to move in, and as such, we need to make sure that the staff operational plans are aligned with our strategic plans. Performance measurements are very, very critical, not only from a data perspective, but from a service program delivery perspective, and we are working and have been working, the board, over the last year and a half now, has received two updates from our executive director, Johnny Missley, on our progress so far with respect to our strategic plans. So those matrices that have been built and those measurements that have been put into the plan are very, very critical for our success. Reputational credibility, a key component of any organization. It's important that, at the end of the day, we strive to raise the bar as high as we can here at the OSA, and ensure that, at the end of the day, that we're listening to our constituents, we're listening to our membership, we're listening to those out there who are experienced in the game, what we call at the storefront level, and then implementing what needs to be implemented going forward. Alignment, you'll see a bit tonight about alignment with the CSA, our national body. And the goal, at the end of the day, is to have our academies and our clubs, to have our leagues, to have our districts, and to have the provincial body aligned with national body initiatives. And I'll talk a little bit more about what we're doing with respect to our alignment at the national level. Communication, a thirteen-letter word that we talk about all the time, it needs to be strong, it needs to be effective, and as such, we need to continue our work with respect to communication at the OSA. Information is still not getting to what we call our storefronts, it's still not getting to moms and dads to really understand why processes are in place, or why service program delivery is in place, what it's there for. So you'll see tonight, and we'll share with you, some of the changes we've made on the communication side of the game. I mentioned before, the OSA is in its second strategic plan phase. The first one was 213 to 215. The strategic plan had four pillars. These are the four pillars: organizational stability, long-term player development, membership value, and programs and services. From that, we started our 216 to 218 plan, and we'll show and demonstrate to you how things have continued to align moving forward with some of the themes and plans that we have. This strategic plan was very operationally based. It looked at LTPD, it looked at club leagues, district leagues, regional leagues, OPDL standards-based leagues, League One, rules rewrite, and then constant review and enhancements going forward. Very, very important that we started off on the technical side of the game, from the board's perspective at that time, and that we tackled this pillar, the LTPD pillar, as was having certainly a significant effect on those on the pitch, and as such, a lot of work has been done. Certainly, when you look at our district leagues, they're expanding, certainly our OPDL league and the work that's being done in standards-based leagues are moving forward. We now have a standards-based league in our regional leagues. PHSL is running a standards-based pilot this year at the under-13 level, and it'll be a guide light to our other regional leagues. Rules rewrite, we had rules, six hundred and sixty pages, double-sided. We've got that down to one hundred and fifty-four, double-sided. Still not where we would like it to be, but want our membership to know that a lot of work has gone in by staff, by the board, by people who are connected directly with the game, to remove the things from the game that are barriers to the game. So rules rewrite continues, we go through an annual review process every year, and obviously, we seek information, we seek everyone's opinion on our rule set and how our rule set is executed. This is our current strategic plan going forward, the cycle that we're currently in. Again, it's built off four pillars. You'll see organizational stability there, long player development, membership engagement, and building partnerships. It was the board's decision with this plan to focus on one pillar, which was the organizational stability pillar, which looks at financial stability through our organization for the next five to ten years, and more importantly, looks at our governance model. Our governance model has to change, and the board realized that and started the process of working, over the course of the year, with an advisory group of experts who have guided us, have educated us on different models, and we'll share their models with you tonight so that you get a bit of a flavor of, number one, the amount of work that's been done. I want to say that the board's worked hard. Every board meeting that we've had since we started this process back in December 2013 doesn't seem that long ago, does it, District President, peer group members who are here? But certainly, a lot of work, a lot of hours, has been invested by the board in ensuring that we come forward with a model that, and it's not the final model, I want to make that clear, I want to make it clear to everyone, that it's an organic issue with respect to the board structure and how the board needs to develop, but we believe we're at a very good starting point. We get started, we get moving forward, and then, over the next three to five years, that will occur as well. So as I mentioned, organizational stability, a key, key component, and that's what we're going to focus on. So the key elements of the new board will be that it's a smaller board, distinct roles for staff and the board. In the past, you'll see some of the history I give you, that the board has been very operational. Twenty-eight people sitting around the table, for those who don't know the size of our current board, and as chairperson, it's pretty tough to manage and handle at times when you have all those great opinions and all that advice coming at you during the course of our board meetings. We want to improve, and this is a critical piece, the interface between the districts, the clubs, our academies, and our leagues, and our OSA staff. To me, this is where the game will be won, this is where the organization will thrive, when we have those four entities, five entities, working hand in glove, sharing what's working, sharing what's not working, working as a collective, working as a team, to make the appropriate changes that are needed at the competitive level, so that athletes who enter the system see a well-defined pathway, they understand where they need to go to improve and move forward in the game. And then improved engagement with the clubs. As I've said before, the clubs are the foundation of the system, the clubs are the key component in the whole process, and this governance model looks at the clubs as really the base pillar which supports the whole organization. You know, people have mentioned to me in the past that we're becoming somewhat elitist in our communications and how we talk about the OSA, and that the grassroots at times gets forgotten. That resonates with me, and I share that with staff, and I share that with everyone that I speak to, that the grassroots is a key, key component here. And you'll see that this new model will interface and drive closer, it'll drive the clubs closer to our districts, it'll drive the clubs closer to us, and I believe when we're closer and we understand each other's platforms and what we need to improve upon, that the results, at the end of the day, will be the best they can. And then, more Talk about communication, we have a number of filters in the system. The OSA would, the CSA would put out a notice to the provincial body, the provincial body would dovetail it down to the district, the district would hopefully dovetail it down to the club, academy, and then down to the league. Here, the board agreed that the OSA would deal directly with our clubs, so everyone in this room and everyone across the province respective entity, and that person becomes a direct communication link with us. So to ensure whatever's circulated by a district, whatever's circulated by the OSA is important information and needs to get out there. And with that, it's not about just top-down, there's no reason why the flow of communication can't come back through the same processes and through the same system. So we're not alone in this process, this is not the OSA out there doing things that other people are not. Certainly, Canada Soccer went a number of years in reforming its board and modernizing its board, we'll talk a little bit more about that. I'm going to say FIFA, being the international governing body, we're not going to talk too much about FIFA governance tonight, but certainly FIFA now is going through reform. I'd like you to remember that our president, Victor Montagliani, who's now president of CONCACAF and sits as vice president, first, I think his first vice president of FIFA, has direct communication links now with the international body, and that's huge for us here in this country, huge for us in this province, to know that we've got linkages and that we're creating partnerships and relationships throughout the game and throughout the political environments that are there. And then governance modernization is happening across Canada, and we're going to share some of the experiences that are happening, good things that are happening. So with that, I'm going to give you just one example of governance change. This is in the province of Nova Scotia. As I mentioned, there are lots of other provinces doing lots of good work, but this was one of the key modules that has come forward, and we thought that was very, very appropriate, free to have a look at it, and we'll show that now.
Soccer Nova Scotia is excited to introduce changes to how we operate. We're changing the role of our board and creating operational teams to make us more dynamic and effective in our day-to-day business. Currently, the Board of Directors oversee our daily operations. This means Soccer Nova Scotia staff are restricted in their jobs because they need the authorization of the board to make some decisions on projects. This process is ineffective and inefficient, so here's how we're fixing that. With the new system, the executive director will be responsible for operations, managing a team of Soccer Nova Scotia staff and operational committees. Staff will have more authority to run daily projects in a timely manner. Traditional committees will be maintained, including long-term player development, competitions, marketing, league, and member services. The new look committees will be composed of staff, league, club, and regional representatives, as well as coaches and officials instead of Soccer Nova Scotia board members. Committees will meet and report to the executive director, who will then update the board of directors on their progress. Similarly, the role of board of directors will shift from operational to a governance model. They'll be focused on strategic planning, risk management, finance and audit, as well as governance and nominations. Board members will be independent of regions or clubs. Instead, they'll include individuals with specific skill sets to assist Soccer Nova Scotia with fulfilling their mandate. Board members will no longer sit on operational committees. Finally, a separate members forum will be created. This forum will include the seven regional presidents, or designated to discuss regional concerns or ideas. They will bring their requests to the executive director and president of Soccer Nova Scotia, who will then relay them to the committees and board. This will ensure regional presidents' representation and input on Soccer Nova Scotia management. The new look Soccer Nova Scotia governance model will help us all work better with more clarity on roles and responsibilities. Staff and members will have input and authority to make decisions on operational matters in a more timely fashion, and the board can focus on long-term vision for Soccer Nova Scotia to ensure we're all heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Ben. Soccer Nova Scotia just approved their new model this past month, and it was a unanimous vote at the end of the day. We've taken some of the concepts within Soccer Nova Scotia, within Saskatchewan, and embedded those into what you're going to see here tonight, so just to give you a little bit of a flavor of what we're going to be looking at. So let's talk about the OSA for the last thirty years, and the current setup that we have from a governance model is that thirty years ago, it was obviously put in place, you'll see, but you see the budgets have significantly increased, certainly the registrants of the organization have increased over this period of time. The districts were put in place at that time, twenty-one in total, seven executive committee members, currently, we have seven executive committee members. So from a governance perspective, nothing's changed in the last thirty years, but look at how much the game has changed. Look at how clubs have changed, look at the integration of academies, look at how our leagues have changed and our districts have changed. We're more professional, we're more businesslike, we're actually running the game as a business, where a lot of times, back then, it was run out of somebody's kitchen, somebody's home, whatever, at the end of the day. So it's important that we catch up. Right now, we're lagging behind. I'll remind you that we are known as the engine of Canada when it comes to soccer, and it's important that our governance model is brought up to speed and continues to grow. As I said before, this is an organic process. What you're seeing tonight is not the final product, it's a start, it's a beginning of what I call a new beginning of change here at the OSA. This is what the current board looks like, just quickly, from a numbers perspective and from a committee perspective. So you have the OSA board, of twenty-eight, supported by standing committees. Currently, we have six standing committees that support the board, and then the Discipline and Appeals Committee is a committee that's independent of the board. Certainly, the discipline and appeals process is an issue we want to develop and go forward with whereby, at the end of the day, it's completely arms-length from our operation. That way, there can be no bias, there can be no issues related to any types of discipline and or appeal taking forward. So we're continuing to develop and continuing to build on this whole issue of discipline and appeals. At the bottom of the chart, you have the executive director, who has a direct reporting relationship with the OSA board. That's the one employee of the board, where Johnny Missley, who's currently in that role, is the person who reports to the board and keeps the board up to date on how we're doing with respect to our whole operation. Johnny has the ability to provide operational committees staff, and at one time, we had thirteen operational committees, we're down to five. We actually have really looked at the diversity and the skill sets on those operational committees, and that has changed dramatically. A marketing committee is a good example, where we have captains in the industry who work with Johnny on marketing communication initiatives. That just gives you a good example of the need and why, the resources that are out there that we haven't tapped into going forward. So there's currently five, there's the TAC committee, there's our match officials committee, our competitions management team, the marketing committee, and the academies group as well. So that's where it currently sits. As I mentioned before, the whole process of modernization began back in December 2013. The board committed to looking at the issue of governance modernization and change, and since that period of time, we've been meeting on a regular and consistent basis. The board has four scheduled meetings a year, basically, one each quarter, and at each meeting, we take a full day, and we've been talking about governance modernization for a full eight hours of each of those meetings, to, number one, be educated, to be educated on models, to understand what a policy board is, to understand what we're trying to achieve, to understand and have clarity around roles, have responsibilities, accountability. And these charts that are at the front, hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at them when we take a little bit of a break, but you can have a look at those, and these are what the board has invested in. This is what the board has agreed to work towards and to build on and to grow as time moves forward. Our role has been changing, a lot of work has been done over the last three years, where we've done some separation currently within our board itself. If you looked at an agenda today compared to an agenda two and a half, three years ago, the agendas two and a half, three years ago were very operationally based, so we had twenty-eight people trying to decide on an operationally-based issue in Thunder Bay. It didn't work, folks. When Thunder Bay had an issue with respect to the game or an operational issue, having twenty-eight people sit around the table and decide whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, not very efficient, not very effective, and that's why we're making these changes going forward. We've gone on the board from being operational to being very policy-based and strategically-based. Certainly, there are some significant issues around the game today that a board needs to be looking at. The board is more strategically focused today on risk management issues. Litigation, risk management, is a huge component in our game today. You may not be aware of it, you may not see much of it, but we do at the OSA level. Financial stability of the game, financial stability has been built on the backs of recreational players. It's a model that needs to change from a financial perspective, and there needs to be a skillset board who can look at that, with captains of the industry, with corporate captains of industry, who can really help and assist us to get that load, that weight, off moms and dads who are continually putting money forward for the opportunities of their sons or daughters. Certainly, the adoption of the good principles, those are the charts in the red ink. The CSA drew up requirements for all the provinces and all the territories. All the provinces and territories are being measured. We recently received our performance card from the OSA back in September board meeting, and I'm pleased to report, on behalf of the board, the board's hard work, that the board has achieved well over fifty percent of those requirements that are there, but there's a long way to go. This is, and people have always said to me, Ron, what's the end destination? We're on a journey here, folks. We're going to look at the game and continue to look at the game from a strategic perspective, where change in policy needs to be made. Through good dialogue, interface, listening, communication, we'll make those changes. And then at the AGM last year, the membership of the association agreed to end all the terms of the board on June the ninth, 2017. So of the twenty-eight people on the board, all our terms end this June, June ninth, and a new skillset board will be put in place, a new competency-based board will be put in place, and from that, the OSA will move into a new era, a new place for the game, a new place for our athletes, coaches, and administrators and match officials to enjoy. So the new governance model, this is what it looks like. You'll see that it's a board of directors of twelve, it has four standing committees that support it currently, but it could be five, it could be three, but currently, we're looking at four. The executive director still has his operational committees. Again, Johnny has the ability to flex that up and down, so if an issue came up with respect to a certain component of the game, Johnny can bring captains of industry together, or people who have a real vested interest in seeing that improve together and work towards solutions, obviously based on the four pillars that I've talked about within our strategic plan. Everything is focused on the strategic plan, always on the strategic plan. So at the end of the day, the board, who, as I like to say, sits on the bus and ensures that staff who are driving the bus are taking the bus in the right direction. And then again, the judicial bodies at the base of the chart, maybe that should be at the top of the chart, the judicial bodies completely separate. But what I want to focus on with you today is the district president's forum, and that's the box to the left, which is to be an advisory group to the OSA board. That's where the twenty-one district presidents will sit. That's where the twenty-one district presidents will focus on the operational side of the game. So we're taking the operational stuff away from what I call captains of industry and moving it to a place where it belongs, where our district presidents will be able to work hand in glove with you as leagues, as academies, as clubs, and look after the issues of our athletes, match officials, and our coaches at that level. So we're going to talk a little bit more about the new board structure and that district president's forum. So it will be a competency-based and elected, all positions are elected positions at the end of the day, so you as members will be able to elect those who you believe will fit the role and the criteria of this new structure. There'll be a president, a vice president, five directors who will be resident in regions, so they're domicile to our regions. So in the case of this meeting here tonight, the region that's been identified is Iqassa, Durham, and Scarborough. So that'll be one region that's represented, not represented, will have a competency-based, highly skilled person on that board, and at the end of the day, we'll look at things going forward. With respect to the independent directors, five independent directors, the five independent directors, again, can come from anywhere around the province, and the five independent directors are there to support, again, the board and its role and its business. And then, of course, we want to have, ensure that we have a minimum of three from each gender on the board. So I know in the case of Durham, you have like eight women on your board and one man, I think, recently, two, I'm sorry. And so we want to make sure that, going forward, that we have diversity on the board, that gender is properly addressed and looked at on the board. We have highly competent people who just aren't either feeling comfortable about the way the game is now or the way boards are structured. Very, very important that this gender issue is addressed, that people are welcomed, that people are needed. We need to look at the issue of athletes, how athletes can interface in these types of roles as well. And match officials, I can't forget about match officials or I'll be severely criticized. Very, very important that that diversity is inclusive, because inclusiveness is one of the values of the OSA. That's built into our strategic plan. So the districts will continue to meet in this new members forum, we're calling it a district president's forum. It'll meet with the OSA president, and it'll meet with the executive director. We're still in discussions about number of meetings a year, setting out the agenda, who chairs the district president's forum. We want the district president's forum to be the driver of this. We want everybody to believe and to know and to understand that power is not being lost, and I want to share that with you. Many people have said, you're taking power away from the districts. We're not taking power away from anybody. What we're doing is we're enhancing the role and responsibilities of each respective area, and when those roles and responsibilities are enhanced and people are held accountable and responsible, our game will soar, we will move to a very, very high level. The district president's forum role, certainly, it'll be the interface for the districts as a collective with the executive director and the OSA president on an advisory basis. It'll receive input and feedback on all operational matters. I see the district president's forum as being something very, very focused on operational matters, and it's not just about the districts. At our last workshop in December, we invited our associate members, who are our regional leagues and our other associate members, SAC was included in that discussion as well. And from that, it's interesting to note that leagues are not looking for votes, leagues want to be a service provider. It was very, very clear to the directors at that meeting, they see themselves as service providers, and as being service providers, they want to interface more with the districts, they want to interface more for the clubs. So at the end of the day, those pathways of competition can really be enhanced, really built upon. So from my perspective, it's about, sure, it's about the people who are within the system, but we're setting up a structure here where the interface can take place. The district president's forum, if it wishes, could go into subgroups, it could add subgroups of a regional league feeding the district president's forum, all kinds of opportunities, not only on the competition side, but on the coaching and match official side. And then, of course, it's about sharing best practice And then, of course, it's about sharing best practices, about sharing what's happening within the districts. We don't get an opportunity to do that at the board level currently. It's just no opportunity to do it. So I can tell you, as chair of the, past chair of the CSA members forum, at the national level, the provincial representatives and the territorial presidents, we all got together twice a year was what the situation was. We had six conference calls over the course of the year. And through those eight meetings, we were able to share with each other ideas and concepts. So I'm proud to say that this province helped Nunavut in futsal, helped Nunavut in match official development. And to me, that speaks volume, volumes, what forums can do to help those who maybe don't have the capacity of others. And through that sharing, some great, great initiatives were had. Certainly, we look at club and district benefits. And as such, we're looking at new initiatives. This is limitless as to what people can do or would like to do under the new model. But certainly, it would be good to have, and I've heard it from many in this room, about club working groups whereby people truly understand the interfaces between their academies and our clubs, and more importantly, how it works with decisions that are being made at both the provincial and the national level. Certainly, there's opportunity there for club development, athlete development, match official and coaching development. And that interface there, again, takes the game to, to a much higher level. And then, not last, but as a very, very important, many, many people speak to me is about the competition model and how the competition model needs to be developed and enhanced and worked on in the future. So the outcomes and benefits of why this change is happening, it certainly will become a more consistent decision-making process at the end of the day by the skilled set board, by the competency-based board. People won't be wearing one, two, three hats. They'll be wearing one hat, and that'll be a provincial hat. Conflict, conflict of interest is a big deal at times. And to be quite frank, I'm tired of the lobbying that goes on to the board about who wants what and who thinks what's best for the game, not considering others that sit around that table. So this competency-based board will have a very holistic look at the game. And the district president's forum will support that competency-based board in, obviously in an advisory role, but letting them know what's working, what isn't working. U.S. members will continue to hold the pillars of the association. Audit, fees, bylaw changes, elections. Competency-based, skills-based board won't have anything there. You will own it. So when you come to annual general meetings or you come to special general meetings, that's where those changes will take place, not at the board table. Effective and improved communication around policy, around program decisions. Again, currently, we just don't have the capacity nor do we have the skillset at our, our current board level. I'm not being disrespectful here. I'm just stating that when you have captains of industry and leaders within respective areas, athletes on the board, that would be a tremendous step forward. The appropriate genders on the board, appropriate diversity on the board versus just a representative who's there to represent his or her district. Greater advanced notification of policy and implementation made it very clear to us as members, many times we put programs and services in place and not appropriate lead time. So lead time in a case of fees, we're not considering any outdoor fee increases this year. And if we are going to consider outdoor fee increases, you need 12 to 14 to 16 months head-up, heads-up notice so that you as clubs, you as districts, you as leagues can do your appropriate budgeting if in fact, you know, fees are going to increase. I'm not saying they are, but you made it very clear through my discussions and what's been presented at the board, that our timelines in some cases have not been adequate for you to effectively communicate to mums and dads and more importantly, implement what's being asked upon. And then regular performance assessment of board and staff. This has become an issue that has been brought forward at our last town hall meeting, which was Monday this week. Well, what about oversight, Ron? What about accountability? Well, oversight will improve under this. The executive director will report to the board, the board of 12. The executive director will be reporting to captains of industry. The executive director will receive annual evaluations, performance reviews, all those things. So the oversight and enhancement processes are going to improve. With respect to the district's president's forum, it will serve the same purpose. You'll have the OSA president, you'll have the executive director at that level communicating on a daily, regular basis on the issues that are impacting you as individuals. And then that mechanism to elevate any concerns can be brought back to the board. So the next steps, there's, it will occur on February the 11th, so a week this coming Saturday. The members of the association will meet at our special general meeting. Bylaw amendments have been put in place, a lot of hard work with bylaw amendments put in place to start the process of implementing this new structure. So that's a week this Saturday. There'll be, all the bylaw preparations have been done. They will, they will change over time. I can tell you that the CSA every year has bylaw changes since they put their new structure in place. And so bylaws are organic, they're flexible, and they need to change as the, as the, as the organization grows. We've scheduled a special general meeting, as I said, for Saturday, February the 17th to get this process underway. And then the continued dialogue and discussion that'll occur over the next two, three, four, five years. Looking forward to seeing a good discussion and dialogue. And more importantly, I'm looking to see us all work collectively to take us to a much better place than where we are currently today. So with that, that concludes the presentation and I'll turn it back over to Dan.
Thank you, Ron. It's, it's not easy to tackle a topic as complex as governance modernization and do a good job of it. I'd like to call on the panel to come up now. Johnny Misley, the executive director of Ontario Soccer, Leslie Bax, president of East Central Ontario Soccer Association, and Brenda Brown, president of Durham Region Soccer Association. Please come on up. So as we mentioned previous, this is being broadcast through the live stream, so we'll be taking questions through the live stream as well. And then throughout the course of the evening, this is, of course, your town hall, so we'd like you to be asking questions as well. What we do ask is that this is a governance modernization town hall, so please keep it focused on that. I know in an environment like this, sometimes you want to ask questions that are personal to yourself. This isn't the forum for that tonight. So as you have questions, please raise your hand, come out to the side of your aisle on both sides. We have the camera in the middle and we don't want to block the view for our live stream. So we'll get things off. I'll start things off with a question for, for Ron. And then we'll get into the panel questions from the audience. Ron, how do you see this impacting soccer for better in Ontario?
Key component for me is we take a lot of duplication out of the game, especially on the decision-making processes at the board level. I just talked at length there about the issue of now-defined roles and responsibilities. People have specific areas, specific issues that they need to look at. And through that clarity, we'll remove a lot of duplication that currently exists in the game and really is an impact to the game. As I said before, captains of industry, it's key. Currently, we're a representative board, representing 21 districts across this province. It doesn't work. I mean, you have people lobbying others to get something put through that at the end of the day, they may not even care about or want to know about. That's not an effective way to run a business, a $12 million business at the end of the day. So this governance modernization process will definitely take us to a new place.
Questions from the audience? Why don't you just step out to the side here, sir?
Fred Dixon from Whuppi Soccer. Just, just to clarify, can you explain again the five members that come from the districts? I didn't quite understand how that worked.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the, you were talking about the regional directors?
Yeah.
Good. The regional directors, it'll be split up into five regions and they've taken the districts, we've grouped the district into regions. The person is domicile, but the person in those regions has no affiliation with a club in a leadership role, no affiliation with the district. They're there in a domicile role to represent, represent from a, from a competency-based, skills-based perspective, that area or that geographical area that we've defined within the province. So when you look at our bylaws and you see our bylaws, and by the way, our bylaws and everything are posted on their website, you can see what's being proposed at the special general meeting. You'll see that well-defined there, Fred, whereby at the end of the day, there are certain restrictions. They can't be a contractor within the OSA. They can't be a, a board member of a league, they can't be a board member of a district. We want somebody there who will really communicate well with that geographical area. And we've got so much diversity and so much opportunity of resource within this province. We see that as a good building model.
Thank you.
Other questions from the audience?
Yeah, my name's Doug Beard from NDRC, North Durham United. This is a question for Brenda because you mentioned, Ron, that we're not taking away the power from the district leagues. Brenda, how do you feel about that?
Um, this is so not me, but what Ron has said is correct. All I can say is I've sat on the OSA board now, I'm going on my seventh year. It's, it, it doesn't work when you try to get 27 people in a room to agree on something. First of all, it can take hours. But when everybody comes with their own agendas and does what's best for their district, it can make things even worse. And to give you an example, I believe there's some people in the room that were at the president's meeting when I had said that I was going to run again for president of the district. I made it very clear that when I go to the OSA, I don't go, I may not always vote the way that is best for my district, I vote the way that is best for the province. And unfortunately, some of those 27 people don't do that. So for me, I think the best thing we can do is get a skillset board and then have that president's forum to, to do what, what needs to be done on the operational side.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Next question is to Ron. Obviously, it took a long time to come up with all this changes. How long have you gave yourselves to implement it to see if it's successful?
It'll be a lifetime journey. I don't know if that answers your question. As I mentioned before, this is not the final stage. It's organic. The CSA was five to six years of implementing their new process. The CSA phased in their process over three years. Our board talked about phasing in as well, and the board said, no, we want to move right into a new model. And that's why all our terms end this June, 2017. So each and every year, you need to build and look at your bylaws. Each and every year, you need to build and look at your policies. And the game is changing. I mean, the game is changing so quickly. A lot of initiatives that'll be coming forward to us from a provincial basis, from a business basis, legislation that's out there. When legislation changes, we need to change as a governing body. So from my perspective, the next two to three years will be critical years in looking at what is working and what is not working. And it'll be critical for that board to analyze and review itself. So what will be put in place will be a board evaluation. So there'll be an executive director evaluation every year, there'll be a board of directors evaluation every year, and there'll be a district president's forum evaluation every year. And potentially, you bring those three bodies together or three entities together. And through the leadership of those groups, you look at what's working and what isn't working. And that would be my answer. Hopefully, that's helpful to you. I just put the model up there that we're looking at if anybody wants to reference it.
You're hanging on to it? Okay. John Vickers from Ikassa. First point, anybody who's speaking into the mic up there, please have it about that much from your mouth or we don't hear you. You just switch the mics. You're on your toes. Okay, these five regional directors who are standing on this committee, they're not going to be part of a club, they're not going to be part of a league, they're not going to be part of the existing structure. How do you pick them?
Well, again, I, I had mentioned there, and we hadn't talked a lot about it, it's a good opportunity to talk about it. We will be nominating, I'm sorry, the board of directors will be appointing a nominations committee on Sunday, February the 12th, the day after the bylaws are approved. And at that meeting, there'll be a nominations committee that will start three months of work in going out and recruiting, scouting, communicating, and really going across the province of Ontario to fulfill the requirements as we've talked about tonight. That nominations committee was put together by a pre-selection committee, which the board approved. Everything we've done, the board has approved. I really want to reinforce this. This is not individuals, this is about the whole board has approved. So we had a pre-selection committee that went and found top-quality people to sit on the nominations committee. And the nominations committee will now go out and find top-quality people to sit on the board. The nominations committee who were appointed for that role, and hopefully will be approved by the board for that role, cannot apply or be part of the current board this year. So we put processes in place and we put policies in place so that no one can leverage, you know, a certain role on a committee to possibly obtain a higher role or another role within the board process. I want to say that we've worked with advisory group people, people who are professionals in governance, communication, law, finance. It's a really strong group of people who have been educating the board and bringing recommendations back to the board. So it's not like the board's been working in isolation. The board took the initiative and the role and responsibility to say, you know what, let's get people who can support us and ensure at the end of the day that when we're looking at things, that we've got it the best that we can. But again, this is organic, John. It's going to change. I know it's going to change and it's going to move to a new level.
Questions? Take another one from email. Leslie, we haven't heard from you yet, so why don't we say, we've seen the good that the shift in governance has done on the national level. It's freed up staff to focus on operational goals. While the board focuses on strategy, how do you see that playing out in Ontario?
I think you need to change your mic. Or speak Italian because I have no idea what you said. How do I see it playing in Ontario for strategic?
How do you see the change that we've seen on the national level occurring on the provincial level and how that will impact us and how that'll play out in Ontario?
Well, I don't know if you know, but Ontario is pretty much the biggest piece of pie in Canada. So people look to us for leadership. Change came in, from, in, in the CSA level, and that's going to filter down to all the other provinces. So people are looking to the Ontario Soccer Association to say, you guys are the biggest piece of pie. Let's see how you do it and you put it together. And they're, and, and they'll follow suit. I think change needs to happen. We've been in existence since 1901, since 116-plus years, there's been very little change. We need to serve our, our clubs and our players and our coaches better than we're doing. Making this change will serve you better, you'll be more efficient, it'll create a better environment to play so you guys can just go out and play with not all the crap that we've been dealing with. So I see this as a positive thing. We're going to move mountains and in the end, you're going to get a better product. We're going to serve you better and you guys are going to be happier in this sport.
Any else from the audience? Take another question from the live chat then. Johnny, this was directed to you at the last town hall, but we didn't get to it specifically. Other national governing bodies have taken this on as a project themselves. You've worked across numerous sports. How would you see something like this impacting soccer for the good in Ontario? How would you see something like this impacting soccer for the good in Ontario?
Great question. Ron showed a slide in his presentation early about we are not alone. And he showed three significant soccer football organizations being FIFA, CONCACAF, and the Canadian Soccer Association. What's important to know that in answering this question is that this is not a soccer movement. This is a national and provincial sport and non-for-profit movement that's happening across the country and has been really in a formative state for the last decade. And we're just behind. And Ron mentioned about the state of the union across our country. We have other provinces, soccer provinces that are ahead of us and have already done their governance change following the lead of the CSA and we're actually just catching up. Takes longer, our organization is much bigger compared to those. Sport Canada has promoted and implemented this. There is the federal non-for-profit, federal act that all national sports associations, charities need to be compliant by fall of 2013. Now the provinces have adopted the same act called ANCA. And as a result, in our province of Ontario, we have to also conform to what is modernization of governments for non-for-profit societies. So this is not just a soccer issue, this is a movement in the non-for-profit community in general. And we're talking here about amateur sport. As for myself, question was asked, this is my fifth non-for-profit sports association I've worked for in my career over 34 years, of which some have been very profile organizations. Two of them, one did not change and this is way back, did not change and actually looked structurally very similar to the Ontario Soccer Association with a big board and districts, et cetera. Another organization I worked for at the national level, while I was there, went through the change of governance modernization. And then I worked for two other organizations more recently that have been skills-based, competency-based boards, very similar to the model that Ron has put up here. So I've worked in sort of on both sides of the pitch, if you will, and have experienced both sides of it. To me, the organization that we have, being Ontario Soccer Association, is, has such great, I've been two years on the job now, it's got such great assets. Assets that a lot of our peers across the country, not just in soccer and other sports, would be absolutely envious of. We are the biggest PSO in Canada and we're the third largest sports association, not soccer association, sports association in Canada. But we're stuck in the 1980s on how we do our business. We have to get into the 21st century. And we saw that other slide that Ron had that showed 30 years of where the organization has evolved and the games evolved and you saw our budget, you saw our staff and those types of key components. What hasn't changed is our board size and our governance hasn't changed. So the end of the day, as Ron has said, this is going to allow us to be more nimble and more efficient to service our members. And the key customer out there is the players that play this game and more importantly, the parents that are at the youth level are making a decision, should I take and put my son or daughter into soccer or should I put them into other sports? And that's the decisions that are being made. And the storefront is the club. And that's the focus in all this is the club. And so with this new governance modernization model, it allows a board, I say, with competency-based people to be more strategic and more tactical when it comes to listening to the members and ideally the customers, the participants, to make sure that we are being more modern and are thinking in delivering the game as it is today. So in summary, this is not just a soccer movement, it is a global movement that's happening across our country.
Other questions from the crowd at the time? If not, why don't we take a 15-minute break? And that's a lot to take in. As Ron encouraged you, please take a look at the information at the front. Hopefully that'll spark some more questions and we can keep the conversation going in about 15 minutes' time. There's refreshments and drinks over on the side. And anybody needing a wash and break, it's through this door. We're going to get started again, guys, in just a minute. If you could take your seats and ask the panel members to return to the front of the room. If we can just take our seats, we'll get going. So we'll get started again. We had an email question come in during the break. It's directed to Johnny and Ron. The email reads, "I attended the town hall in Thornhill on Monday night. Thank you very much for holding this. It was very informative. I did have one question, however..." I did have one question, however. In response to a question from the floor, it was stated that clubs are currently being governed by both the District Association and the leagues, but that this is a situation that was going to be addressed in the future. I wondered if you could explain what is currently being discussed about alleviating this double governance?" And that question comes from Sandra Hilliker, District Administrator at York Region Soccer Association. So either John or Ronnie to handle that one.
Thanks for putting that forward, Ben, because we do want to make sure, at the end of the day, we remove duplication where we can. So what's happened recently is the CSL and the CGSL have come together. The two leagues have amalgamated. And this process started quite a while ago, and it's good to see it come to fruition. And when they amalgamated and came together, an opportunity existed for what they call transitional bylaws. Transitional bylaws to take them to their first annual general meeting. So the first annual general meeting of the league, new league, I'll call it the new CSL, but it's the CGSL and CSL combined, will have its first annual members' meeting in October, November of 2017. They have a set of transitional bylaws to keep them in force until that period of time. And I've had some initial discussions with some of the board members of both those leagues who are currently working as a collective together on that board, to state that we don't need the board. Think about it. Members who play in leagues are your district members. Why do they need two memberships? To play in a league and be part of a district? Why not allow the members to be the members of the district, and then the leagues become service providers? So you take the boards of leagues, you filter them out, and you replace them with people who are experts at running leagues, and we have a lot of those people around the province, and empower them to be a committee. And in the case of regional leagues, the regional leagues are governed by the OSA, and they create that linkage with league management committee. And I'll get Johnny to speak a bit about the potential of some real interface and solidification between the regional league setups and our actual league management committees, which we're retooling, which is, again, these are some of the things, Ben, that we're looking at as we go forward. And so I hope that helps the question, or the person who asked the question, that as now the CSL and the CGSL are brought together, we're really asking the question, is a board required? My initial answer is no. Is a group of highly qualified people required to service delivery that, and then the members are part of the districts? I think that fits the equation. So I'll go a little bit further. I brought the districts of Central Region together with the CSL, the new CSL, which has the CGSL in it, and we had a good three-hour meeting to discuss what was working and what was not working with the districts of Central Region. So imagine that. The CSL now communicating directly with the districts. The people who are participating in the league only have one membership, and that's the district. And at the end of the day, the leagues become service providers, which is what they told us at the board meeting. That's all they want to be, is a service provider. They're not interested in governance. They're not interested in putting a whole set of bylaws in place. OSA bylaws, league bylaws, district bylaws, club bylaws. You know, bureaucracy number one in Canada. On the pitch, not so number one. So I just wanted to share that. And maybe, Johnny, you can talk about a little bit of that interface with the new league management group, which is a key component on the operational side of how we interface.
So I think what Ron's referencing is the, and it really kind of goes under strategically at the board level and the strategic plan, the older plan and even the newer plan, is under LTPD. We have two standards-based leagues now, high-performance leagues in that training-to-train, training-to-win, training-to-compete level, being OPDL and League One. Below that, what is the sustainability now of preparing that athlete to either choose to go into the high-performance stream of soccer or into the Soccer for Life stream of the LTPD? And so we're looking at the regional leagues, which Ron had mentioned, on the club side, so that the players that are coming through the regional leagues are being prepared for potentially going into the high-performance stream or going through choosing to go to Soccer for Life, be male or female player. So in regional leagues, we're looking to, as a bit of a pilot project this year, with one league, at only the U-13 category, because usually a regional league starts at U-14. We're looking with the Golden Horseshoe Soccer League, a pilot project with U-13, to start with some minimum standards towards a standards-based league at a very minimal level. So it starts to get the districts that are working together, in this case, the three districts that make up the Golden Horseshoe Soccer League, allow them the opportunity to work on some minimum standards to manage those standards, not different than how the OSA manages standards at the OPDL, albeit the regional leagues aren't the same level standards as the OPDL. So that's one part on that side. And on the other side, on another project, which is also a strategic initiative of our strategic plan, is the integration of private academies, non-club academies, that are ORCA, Ontario-recognized, non-club academies, and for all intents and purposes, private four-run academies. And where they fit, and we're piloting this year, a private academies soccer stream, where they compete on the parallel sides at that level and develop players within their stream, and then those academies and athletes come into the high-performance stream. So now you have a club system coming through the regional level into the high-performance streams in that high-performance area of LTPD, and then the academy athletes coming through that development experience, again, into the high-performance stream. And then across all that is the Soccer for Life, the recreational, the competitive youth soccer programs that take place, like the Ontario Cup, et cetera. So that's part of the initiatives that we're working on to bring that sort of alignment together we haven't had before, because of all the fracture that's out there.
Let's take a question from Twitter. As I mentioned, this is an interactive experience. We have questions coming in from the live chat, as well as online, on social media. So the question is, this one here, "Is there an open application process for the district rules?" And I think that they're driving at there is, how would they become part of the representative portion of that board? If you could explain that process a little bit more. I know you did explain it earlier in your presentation, but just reaffirm for them what that process is for those district representations.
So the district representation is through the members' forum. If I, I think this may help a bit. I'd like to go back to your question, Fred, about the regional director, the five regional directors. And I want to thank IT, because my advised, our advisors for the board are out there listening, and they're helping to get this messaging correct. I don't have all the answers. I rely on a lot of people around me, you included, to make good decisions at the end of the day. But getting back to the five regional directors, if I can, let's see, I've got to go the right way here. Back to the resident in regions. This is really about having people on the board who are captains of industry, but represent the fabric of those regions, Fred. So as a good example, if one of those regions is classified as Soccer North, Aboriginal groups, Khorah, Fort Francis, Dryden, where capacity is not very high, we need to have those persons on the board who are there to bring that messaging about the fabric environment of those areas, to understand that, at the end of the day, the decisions that we're making, can they build and can they manage those going forward? We get lots of complaints that, Ron, our club is a small club, and it's strictly volunteer-driven. So a process coming through, say, for registration of doing it all online, may work great for people who have great capacity, but for a small club in a small area, which doesn't get talked about at the current board level, but should be talked about at the district level, district president's level, gets missed. And sometimes we put undue pressure on the system, which then drives away volunteers. So, you know, the representation of you as clubs is within your district, and it'll be up to the district leaders to set those linkages. So if it's appropriate for Durham and for ICAHA to work together on a pilot or a project in conjunction with staff at the district level, why not let them do it? Why would you want it to come to a board and people around a table make that decision? To me, it's ineffective, it's inefficient. But at the end of the day, we want that fabric known. We want to know how that environment exists, what potential is it within that environment? And I hope that just adds a little bit to it, Fred, because your question was good. I don't think I answered it to the best, that sort of explaining. It's really about that geographical setup and what that means to the game when decisions are made. And I hope that answers that question, Ben.
We'll go back to the live stream chat now. Josh Arnold had a question, and I'll try and frame it in the context of this evening and governance modernization. A big part of what we were speaking about earlier is how we're coming in line with what is mandated by the province. And so as a result of that, it could impact, if we do not align, the ability of our organization to get government grants. So Johnny, if you could speak to that a little bit, and how that impacts our budget, and how that impacts our overall operation.
It's a great question, and this was kind of discussed or brought up as well at the Monday Night Town Hall in York Region. So there's no question that, because of the movement, I told you, is taking place across the country, both at the federal and provincial level, that under the Ontario Non-for-Profit Societies Act, that we also have to comply. Recently, the new minister, Minister McMahon, our sports and cultural minister, through her leadership and the sports services department of the provincial government, has sent to us, all sports, who are funded by the province of Ontario, the new SRP program, which is the sport recognition policy. And in there, it clearly states that governance modernization, there's 24 requirements that have to be compatible with, of which 18 of them, I believe, have to be done by April 1st, which we're going to be fine. The other ones are by April 1st of 2018. And one of them is governance modernization, which is coming up, and that's going to affect our funding. So it's not just for us, it's for all provincial sports organizations. So this is, and not just in the area of governance modernization. Ron, you spoke on Monday night about also the legislation that's come, and directive regarding gender equity on boards, and you might want to add some comments to that as well, and you can share with this group what you shared on Monday at the York Region regarding that.
Again, sorry. Again, it was provincial, it's provincial legislation, and we're to be at a 40% level for gender issues by 2019. We're proposing a 25% start in the new model that we have set up. So at the end of the day, a lot of work, a lot of work to be done. We know there's a lot of mechanics behind it, but this legislation is important to us, because we're funded by the province of Ontario. And we'll have significant funding removed at the end of the day if we don't show some kinds of initiatives and some kind of movement forward to achieve these targets. Whether I like the target or not, or whether we like the target or not, it's not the issue. The word is out there, and this is what our provincial leaders are asking us, asking us to do. So there'll be more work done in the issue of gender, more work done in the issue of diversity going forward. And as I said before, it's organic. It has to be flexible, so at the end of the day, we can make the appropriate changes. And you'll be part of that, because you own the bylaws. So when bylaws need to be changed, updated or upgraded, we'll be to the membership to say, hey, we need to look at this. What do you recommend? How do you believe we should get to this point?
We could hear from Brenda or Leslie on that as well, that'd be fantastic.
I mean, we can add to it, but really, that's it in a nutshell. Folks, we need to do this. We really do. And I think that you'll be very pleased when we get through this process and this journey with the end results, so.
It's funny to think, and I was just saying, as we were leaving the stage earlier, the only two female presidents of districts in this entire province are sitting on this stage right now, in this area. So that's pretty sad, when you look at 21 districts and only two are female. When we had our discussion as a board, and we were talking about gender equity, we came up with the number three, which would be approximately, not even a third, it would end up to be a fourth, when the numbers rose. And we discussed that for, what, two hours? Would that be fair to say? Maybe even more than two hours? Because most of the room didn't feel there needed to be that type of thing. That it would be hard to find qualified women. It would be difficult, that was a lot of the statements. So it's very important, we're still at that stage where I think we have to have some type of quota. It's sad to say, because I don't think any woman feels great about being one of those three, because she's a woman. But it hasn't changed enough to, that if we left it without it, that you would see, I think, any women sitting around that board. And it's very important to have that different opinion and different skill set.
Yeah, just to add to that, at the CSA level, there are the six regions, and since the new model's been put in place, no female has been brought forward by the regions for a position at the table. They're being filled through the independent positions. These are some of the challenges that are out there at the end of the day. So, you know, we're trying to build something that supports the whole game holistically, so that everyone has a place and everyone can be part of a great game. Yet, at the end of the day, the structures that we're having to put into the game or embed into the game to make sure that we get to that level, it really tells me to step back a bit and really look at our society, and how our society's built, and how that fabric's built. Because at the end of the day, we shouldn't have to do it. At the end of the day, we shouldn't have to say there's three, or four, or five. It should just automatically happen. But I just wanted to relay that to you, that those regional positions, our regional representative currently is Nick Bontas of one of those six regions, but everybody over the last three to four to five, in fact, I know Don Story's listening, is the governance chair of the CSA, that at the end of the day, I don't believe any of the regions have put forward a female leader from their provincial or territorial geographical areas.
If I can just go back to, just back to that one question before, where the person was asking about the regional representatives, or the five directors, resident in regions, just so everyone understands, anyone can apply for those five, to be one of those five. It just means you need to live, only one person from each area that lives in that area will be put on that board. So an example is, if six people were to apply from this area, only one of those six could be elected as one of those five. But it's anybody. It just means that, once you get there, you have to give up any affiliation you have with a league, a club, and a district, and that will be the best thing that can happen, because people will come with one hat and do what's best for the entire province, as opposed to just certain areas. But you'll have that understanding and knowledge from that representative of that area to understand what some of those districts or clubs in that area go by, especially when you look at something like up north.
Got a question from the crowd?
Yep. Fred Dixon again, from Whuppee Soccer. Question around how this new structure will help the clubs at the club level. I mean, we know today, we have the districts that support our needs at the OSA level, but in the new structure, can you explain a little bit about how it's going to support the club, or how it better services us at the club level?
I'm going to give...
District leader first, problem second.
I'm going to give some examples, and I think we discussed this earlier, so I'll just reiterate for everybody else. But the OSA board right now spends so much time on things that I don't believe the board should be spending time on, because the clubs and the districts spend the time on that. I don't really care what colors clubs use, I don't care what color uniforms you wear, I don't care whether a referee is allowed to wear a hat or not. Those aren't things that I go to spend three days to discuss. What I would like to discuss is, how can we, as an organization, help to find a sponsor for OPDL league that may pay for some kids who can't afford to play but have the talent to be at that level? We've not been able to discuss that at the board, because we've spent a half a day on things like whether a referee can wear...
spent a half a day on things like whether a referee can wear a hat or not at a tournament. So, when you ask how it would come down to benefit a club, I think you would find if strategic people were sitting around that table, making decisions that were best for the province and the organization, the running of the organization, you would find that there, especially on the financial side, would probably be a lot more help for the clubs than what is happening right now. And if you have an executive director in Johnny, who has, in the short time that he's been there, turned that organization around from being not as good as it is now, on every side, on the marketing, on the communication. I'm not saying that it's the greatest that it can be, because I'm sure it can get better. But for where we've come in such a short time, that's the person who should be dealing with the operational problems and dealing with the districts and the clubs at that level, not the board. The board should be finding strategic ways to financially help this organization, to make sure that, as an organization, we can give back to the players what they need in order to play the game.
Can we hear from John as well?
Well, not being an elected board member, as being an operational person, that's what I do every single day, with committees and our staff of 36 people, is every day we're working, we're doing programs and projects in support of the storefronts. And the storefronts are the 650 clubs that make up our great population of soccer in the Province of Ontario. So, to me, it's what we're doing right now. But to have a, as you saw in that Nova Scotia video, to have a board that allows us to focus on operational items and manage it accordingly, and refine that mechanism to support the clubs, or administratively through the districts, the more freedom and the more flexibility that allows us to do that, the more efficient we can be. And I think, you know, the illustration there was, the illustration was when the board was trying to make a decision, the old traditional board, staff were sitting around tapping, waiting for an answer. So, this efficiency services the membership a lot better going forward. So, this is not, as I say, this is not rocket science we're doing here. This is bringing this organization from the 1980s into the 21st century.
Anything else from the crowd at the time? We'll go back to the district questions as well. Brenda and Leslie, the question was asked, what would you say to those in your district who aren't certain about this change, that would convince them that we're heading in the right direction?
Come spend a weekend at an OSA board meeting.
[laughing]
As a guest, you'll get a good idea of what we're talking about. Change has to come. We will lose grants, all kinds of things, if we don't start to make this change now. It's taken, Ron said, three and a half years, but I think this has been discussed for even longer, more general. But it's been at least six years. And it feels like every time we take a big step forward, there's a group that wants to push back. I don't understand that reasoning. I still try to understand it, but we've been told that we have to be patient, we have to make baby steps. We're at the point now where it's like, we have to make the change. You've done it at the club levels. When I was sitting as, doing work with Pickering, it was at a time when it was a huge board. Everyone rolled up their sleeves, spent a lot of time talking about operational things, because they were the only ones to do it. They didn't have a large staff at that time. I think it was one person on staff, maybe two. The clubs have done it. The clubs are running with executive directors. They're running with technical people. You've made the change over the 10 years. For some reason, the OSA board hasn't made that change, and it's time that we start to make that change now.
I think that, I've had this discussion, actually, partly last night at an AGM. This new structure will empower clubs. We hear you. You have voices. This is a better way to push those voices up into the President's Forum, where we can actually discuss things and get things done, and report to, the board can move with whatever we have for suggestions. So, as a club, they have more voice now to come to the district, come to the president, and we can push that to a forum where they're going to be heard. Now, it's heard, but it's very muddled. And we need to streamline that better, so that clubs can get on with their business that they're doing, and we can hear what they need, what their needs are, and we can push that up through the governance model and get their voice heard. So, I think it's going to be more of an empowerment, really. And I'm so excited for it to get started on it, because I think that you're just going to be amazed, honestly.
Another question from the crowd?
I'm Will Thurber with the Oshawa Kick Soccer Club. We have a parent who has two children. One child is 18, and is graduating out of our system this year. The other child is four, and is just starting our system. Can you tell me, if a parent asks me, how is the experience of that four-year-old child, over the next 14 years, going to be better than the experience of their older child, who is now leaving the system as a result of these changes?
A big-picture question. What do you see as the improvements going forward?
When you say change, I'm kind of thinking in many areas. I'm not so sure there'll be much of a change. The issues that'll change is how we respond as adults to what we're, our role and responsibility is, Will, from accountability perspective. It's missing in the game today. Our rules are not defined. And as such, it becomes a confusing path for parents. When a parent comes to your club and says, what's the pathway for my athlete, you can't give them a clear pathway, currently. The pathway's not fully defined and fully finished at this point. So, I mean, it's a great question, but when you say, how do you think this change will impact that four-year-old that comes into the system? I'm hopeful that the four-year-old will play till they're 84 years old, that their experience, whether they decide to stay in the recreational component of the game, and/or move to the elite, or the more competitive side of the game, is an experience where the bureaucracy and the administration, the duplication, all those issues that are barriers, that you and others have personally told us we need to get rid of, will make that child's experience a much better experience at the end of the day. Ron, do you want to add anything, anybody?
Take another question from the live chat. Another high-level question, looking big-picture. What would you say is the end result, a perfect end result, that the OSA can achieve through governance modernization? Johnny, do you want to tackle that? Or Ron?
Sanity? No. Look, end result. Well, first off, anybody who's experienced in governance reform will tell you that, and I think, Ron, the word you used was organic, it's never going to be perfected. It's always going to be fluid. It's going to be moving. It's going to be refined as you go along. But as an end goal or vision, is really a more united province, that's led by a board that oversees the operations of the organization, with professional staff running it, that is providing an opportunity for young athletes, both male and female, people with disabilities, who want to try the abilities of playing the game of soccer, to people, young and old, that are playing the game, that they're knowing that there's accountabilities and strategies in place that's going to allow them to have a more productive and positive and joyful experience playing the game. It's really as simple as that. And right now, the structure that we have is not a structure that's efficient, and nor is it relevant or current to reflect today's governing of soccer. So, really, this is about taking the reform at the national level that allows, then, to trickle down, have similar reforms at a district and a club level, so there's better accountabilities in place to represent the membership and the participants ideally.
I think this slide helps that question a bit. Maybe it's not about what the outcome is. Maybe it's about what we currently have, and what we currently have isn't working. It's 30 years old. So, we need to move somewhere, someplace. And through three and a half, four years of hard work, we're at a point of taking a turn here, that's been very well and carefully plotted and well thought out. Are all the collective answers there at the end of the day? I'm sure we've missed something. I'm sure something will have to change. I'm sure things will have to be tweaked. But I don't want to see our organization stay the way we are, especially here. We have seven executive committee members, plus 21 board members. I mean, we have huge issues. This type of board setup, this type of arrangement, creates divisiveness at the governance level. And when there's divisiveness, it filters right down to the pitch, filters right to the pitch. So, let's work together, hand-in-hand. Let's walk together and take ourselves to a new place. And if we want to move a little bit left or right on the roadway, or whatever we're traveling, or on the ship, okay, we're not on the Titanic, okay, we're going to cruise, and we're going to find that right place for our athletes. At the end of the day, I think this slide really talks about outcomes. The outcome will be better, because what we have is not working.
Looks like we're tapped out for questions from the audience, as well as from the live stream and from social media. So, we'll end it there tonight, folks. Thank you again for joining us. Round of applause for yourselves, as well as the panel members.
Just one last thing before we depart for the evening. I just want to say that we're working, the advisory group, we're putting documentation together. If you go on our website now, you'll see a spot on the website where it talks about the upcoming special general meeting. It lists out the bylaws and all the changes, shows the highlights in red, all the changes that are occurring with respect to the bylaws, and why they're being changed. We're in the process of creating documents that will start to look at what we're looking for on a competency-based board. So, what are the skills we're actually looking for? So, we're going to build a section on the website that will, again, be a communication piece for you to look at and view. So, more detail on the District President's Forum, more detail on the role of the nominations committee. How does that process work at the end of the day? More work on the judicial committee, more work on the issue of accountability, oversight, and review. So, you'll see this new section come forward. I'm hopeful it'll happen in the short term. I know that Johnny's got a tremendous communications, marketing department there that can really help us in that regard. But I believe if we get this communication piece on the website, and more people interface and interact with it, and communicate back to us, I think then, there's a lot of good decision-makers in this room, and watching around the province, who can really support and assist us in the whole process going forward. So, at the end of the day, we can truly say that we've got a family working on this whole project. Thanks.
And that family is something we want to see out. March 3rd to 5th, we are hosting our annual Soccer Summit 2017 this year. Tickets are on sale. If you haven't seen some of the speakers so far, a couple of really big names this year, with Jason DeVos, Lorraine LaFren, Sheldon Kennedy. This is the premier development opportunity for Ontario. It's going to be taking place at the modern and spacious Trent University, with on-field sessions taking place at the beautiful neighboring Oshawa Civic Rec Center. This combination venue is the perfect backdrop for Ontario's definitive soccer development conference. We hope to see you all out there. Check out ontariosoccer.net to see the 2017 speakers, and there's still more announcements to come. Ontariosoccer.net for everything you need, tickets, information. We're looking forward to having all of you out. It's a little bit in your backyard, so we hope to see some of the faces that we see here tonight, out there in a few weeks' time. Thanks very much for joining us tonight, folks.